All right, now that all the council members except one is present, I call to order the June 18th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency and Finance Authority. Councilmember Orozco will not be in today. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We'd like to acknowledge the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. The council met in closed session this evening. On the agenda are the items that was discussed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please provide a report?
The council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda. No reportable action was taken.
We would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Mr. Tom Ramos. If you'd please come to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Ramos. As is noted on our agenda, city council is prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are not brought up under Item 1 for public comment, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. The public is given an opportunity at this time to address city council on issues not listed on the agenda. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out a request to speak part and return it to the clerk. We accept the request to speak parts up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Madam Clerk, would you please present who is your company that is sitting right next to you?
Yes, this is Simona Forster. She is a student at UC Davis, a political science major, and she is our summer steps intern. She is working with the city clerk's office and our deputy city manager and our government relations team.
Welcome, Simona. You will see also in front of the clerk and next to Simona is analog flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. Now, while we also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct, posted and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Now, this brings us to Item 1, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. And each person has three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Matt Weaver.
Mr. Weaver, welcome.
To see you all today. No big crowd tonight, which is good. No waiting queue. So, and what a privilege to actually state your concern, objectives, whatever, for three minutes. Sometimes we can take that for granted. Not recently, right? We wouldn't take that for granted recently, so I don't take that for granted today. So, the reason I'm here today is the council had a strategic vision for retail cannabis dispensary back in '23. Drip, 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 2025, watching the paint dry from the sidelines here. You secured state funding. You had a vision. You left your staff with a directive to not unreasonably exclude any part of the city in the maps, not to create a green zone by creating a red zone. Staff went ahead and did what they did. That said, you issued an RFP. Wasn't very well received on the streets. Didn't get a lot of applicants. You got two. You got two very different applicants. One, which represents the equity program that you put together. One, that represents the other side of the river, money, capital stack with an equity applicant in front. You excluded full zones of the city that would make it less desirable for someone to find a place with security, parking, visibility, and existing zoning. Your RFP makes its way through its quiet process. Very little visibility, very little transparency, and state funding has an expiration date on it. So, all this time, all this vision, and here we are. You've got the opportunity to get this thing on track, or you've got the opportunity to have this thing come under objections from someone like me. I've got two letters of intent. One in 2022, which somebody, which is a puzzle law, offered me $2.2 million for my real estate if I would give it to them to operate a retail dispensary, pending your approval. Unbeknownst to me, this is even going on. At that time, I got close to this matter. 2024, I have another letter of intent from your equity applicant. May I lease your property? Sure, we'd be happy to, pending your approval. Here we are at the finish line. I got a hardcore bet that outside money, outside capital, and deep-keeled people from not on this side of the river will end up on top of this thing. The West Sacramento businesses, not so much. Small Business Accelerator, money sitting there, Measure N, money sitting there, and it's bottlenecked. Money's getting spent to say West Sacramento is a great place to do business, but what about those of us who've been here long before there was a publicity campaign? Listen, at the end of the day, staff tends to do what it's going to do when nobody speaks up. In this case, land value, property value has a direct impact on what you're planning and the people who write these rules give people. And I'm tired of sitting on the sidelines and watching winners and losers be made behind closed doors.
Thank you for coming. Happy to be with you, Mr. Weaver.
We have no additional requests to speak on this item.
All right, and next we have three presentations under the city manager's office. And I will begin with the presentation of a proclamation recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth National Freedom Day. And we have our River City High School Black Student Union. Councilmember Early.
Hi, do you guys want to come up while I read the proclamation? Come on down. Welcome. So, I will read the proclamation. We would love to hear from you all as well. And then also, we had our Juneteenth event that you all were integrally a part of as well. And so, we'd love to tell everyone about that, too. So, first, let me start with the proclamation. Juneteenth, this is the proclamation of city council, City of West Sacramento designating June 19th as Juneteenth National Freedom Day. Whereas the City of West Sacramento acknowledges the significance of commemorating the liberation of enslaved African-Americans and celebrating their invaluable contributions to our nation. And whereas Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth National Freedom Day or Emancipation Day, marks June 19th, 1865, when Union General Gordon Granger proclaimed the end of slavery in Galveston, Texas, aligning with President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation from over two years prior. And whereas Juneteenth symbolizes a key moment in American history, making the long-awaited attainment of freedom and the ongoing struggle for racial equity and justice. And whereas Juneteenth festivities offer a platform for contemplation, education, and discourse on the historical adversities faced by African-Americans and the ongoing efforts for equality, inclusivity, and social justice. Let me say that one more time. For equality, inclusivity, and social justice. And whereas Juneteenth serves as an important reminder of the strides our nation has made and the continued work that still lies ahead in achieving equality. And whereas the City of West Sacramento is committed to fostering a diverse, fair, and inclusive community dedicated to upholding and honoring the rights and dignity of every resident. And whereas the City of West Sacramento recognized Juneteenth by holding its annual Juneteenth celebration on Friday, June 13th, 2025, at Bridgeway Lakes Park, providing an opportunity for all residents to participate in activities that foster cultural empathy, racial harmony, and community unity. Now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the West Sacramento City Council that June 19th be recognized as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in the City of West Sacramento, urging all residents to commemorate this day and engage in events promoting the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans and promoting the values of equality, justice, and diversity. Proclaimed this 18th day of June, 2025. Do we want to hear first from our BSU? Okay, perfect. Do you guys want to come down and say some things? And please introduce yourself, too.
Wait, okay, sorry. Hello, my name is Kiana Council, and I'm the River City High School Black Student Union Vice President. I'd like to formally appreciate your recognition for Juneteenth and giving us the honor to be here tonight as we accept the proclamation. Juneteenth commemorates the freedom African-Americans were granted after abolishing slavery. But to me, it's much deeper than that because we have to recognize the amount of work and effort it took African-Americans, as well as our allies, as we strive to be seen as American citizens, gaining independence after years of pro-slavery laws and continued suppression of our rights. Our fight has shaped the ways things are now as many African-Americans are adding on to the brighter side of history because of the opportunities we are given, such as education, leadership roles, and access to better resources. These things that are handed to us now are because of the battles we fought hard for and won. These continued wins signify the importance of celebrating Juneteenth and truly understanding the history behind it because it is American history and we can't ignore the truth of our past. I deeply appreciate your acknowledgement of Juneteenth. Thank you for including the community in on the celebration, fostering a space where we can be united and remember the sacrifices laid down for us and for the future generations to have a promising future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
Just briefly, you know, I can't help but smile the whole time because Kiana has been here in front of you all last year. We come to these meetings, they hear about what it's about. And so, for you to speak today, Kiana, thank you so much. She was telling Sunny here, "Don't worry, you'll have your turn." She's a little shy. And explaining that it took her about a year to get up here. But the point is that she is here. They are here. And they are here because of you. All of you who recognize the importance of this and the work that this BSU continues to do. I'm extraordinarily proud of these group of officers. They are all officers with River City Black Student Union and all played a role in actually starting BSUs at the elementary school level here now in Washington Unified School District. This evening, we were going to bring some younger kids with us. It just so happens to be the parent meeting for Freedom Schools at Riverbank tonight. So, I attended that and came right over here. But again, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. They don't call it work for nothing, right? And we are just happy to do this work and have your support. And Mayor Guerrero, when you said at the Juneteenth celebration that we will always have your support and that of the council, I truly believe in that, and it meant so much. These children have no idea how lucky they are to have that support in their city when counterparts statewide don't receive that. It is very heartbreaking as someone who works state level to see that. So, again, thank you so much for your continued support.
Let me jump in. Thank you for being here tonight. Kiana, you mentioned the amount of work that has been done in the past. And I just, you mentioned work. And the BSU right now is doing additional. And I just appreciate the effort that you put together, not only build community, but to put out a message of equality and love. And it's so incredible that we have a BSU at our high school that the city gets to partner with for our Juneteenth celebration. When Dr. Early approached me about planning our first Juneteenth celebration, I think that was three years ago, I was like, "I'm all in, what are we doing?" And you guys have been there from the start. And the football team was there. And to see what that has become today, it's incredible. And I'm so proud of our city. And I agree with Mayor Guerrero. You will always have our support. You will always have my support. And so, thank you for the work that you do. And thank you for being just strong, incredible role models for all the students and the entire community of West Sacramento.
Same thing here. I just want to say that I've attended the Kwanzaa celebrations and listening to the culture, the history, which is rooted in who we all are, each of us are, in one way or another. It's our traditional values that keeps that momentum alive, you know, preserves our identity, our heritage. And we just got to continue to practice that and remind each other, you know, that this is important. And, you know, just elevating. And I'm looking forward to future, you know, experiences with you as we continue to remind each other what's important in our lives, even to the little ones that are coming up and growing up, that they see someone that they can look up to and appreciate and feel safe. You know, it's still a challenging time today where we know racism is pervasive. And, you know, it's just so unfortunate that we feel sometimes people want to take us back. But here in West Sacramento, it's our safe place. It's going to be a place where we protect one another and we're going to uphold our values. And these are our values. So, thank you so much for standing shoulder to shoulder with us, you know, protecting and securing our spot here in City Hall and all throughout the city. Greatly appreciated.
So, I wanted to, I talked with Mayor before this and said, "Hey, we should also probably talk about our Juneteenth event that we had this past week, which was just so beautiful. It was our third annual. There were several hundred folks there. And every year, it just gets bigger and bigger. And it's just so amazing because, as Mayor Protim Sipisel Hall said, this was something that was started three years ago. And it was just, we were unsure of what it would be. I remember we said like, "Maybe we get 50 people? And that will be great. That will be a success." And to see what it is now. And again, you all were there and continue to be there along with our River City football players. Again, along with a whole host of vendors and now our city staff. And so, I want to make sure, I thank you guys. I want to make sure I also thank our city staff who took this on and also saw the vision. And in a world in which, right now in this country, seeing diversity, seeing inclusion, seeing equity are considered woke and dirty words, I think it is beyond that you guys are standing in the gap for our community. You are doing something that is really, really hard when it feels like sometimes the world is against you. And so, as our mayor said, I hope that you feel that West Sacramento is your safe place and that you are seen and that you are welcome and that this is part of our values. And so, very excited that you guys were able to take this proclamation today. I'm also very excited that our own staff get to have the time off to celebrate Juneteenth as well. That was something that did not exist just a few short years ago. And so, thank you all for being there. And thank you to my colleagues for being together in this celebration.
Wait, Mayor, I'm sorry, just really quick. I was going to say, thank you for your leadership. You guys are so fortunate to have Patrice as a mentor. And also, for the younger generation that's out there, you guys are going to be incredible role models. So, thank you. So thank you.
Next is a proclamation recognizing Tom Ramos for his longtime service on the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency Board. Tom, if you can come on up, I'm going to read your proclamation. Of the city council, in recognition of Tom Ramos for his longtime service on the WSAFCA board. Whereas Tom Ramos is a native of West Sacramento and a graduate of our Lady of Grace Parish School and James Marshall High School. Whereas he earned a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from the University of Nevada and was the owner and operator of Ram Auto Parts and Machine Shop in West Sacramento for 25 years, from 1981 to 2006. And he has served as a trustee for Reclamation District 537 since 2007. And whereas he has served on the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency Board since 2008 and has served as Chair of the Board since 2017. Representing WSAFCA on several regional flood planning boards and whereas he encouraged and approved WSAFCA's early implementation projects, including Ice Street Bridge, the Rivers, CHP Academy, Rivers Project, Southport Sacramento River Phase 1 and 2. And whereas he attended and presented the West Sacramento General Reevaluation Report before the Civil Works Review Board at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Headquarters in Washington DC in December 2015. And where it received approval. And whereas he participated in multiple cap-to-cap trips to Washington DC, advocating for the West Sacramento project to receive authorization under the Water Resources Development Act and to obtain a New Start designation for full federal participation. Whereas he approved the construction of the Southport Levy Improvement Project in 2017. And whereas he remained committed to the project and witnessed the federal New Start designation being approved in the 2022 budget. And whereas he consistently served as an ardent steward of WSAFCA's budget and supported the use of flood assessment funds for critical flood protection projects. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of West Sacramento City Council hereby recognizes Tom Ramos for his longstanding commitment to public service and his dedication to advancing flood protection for the residents and property owners of West Sacramento. Proclaimed this 18th day of June 2025. Congratulations, Tom, and thank you for your service. I'll give you a few moments to share your thoughts.
Okay, well, thank you. And I apologize to everyone for all that. They said they needed to fill a page. Kind of put a lot of stuff in there. But I don't know, I guess just thank you for recognizing, you know, I just enjoyed, you know, being able to provide some kind of service to my hometown, West Sacramento. And something as critical as flood control, you know, I think it's beneficial to everyone that lives here to be able to see the improvements we set. And I guess just, you know, the thank, the easy thing, it was kind of easy. Just my job was just to say yes and vote yes on a lot of things and just keep things moving forward. And that was easy to do because we had great flood and city staff that was always there to help us out, good consultants, good engineers. Even the lawyers were nice most of the time. And so with that, it was good, easy to keep things moving forward. And there's just too many people to really, you know, thank in person or name. But I see Paul's here tonight representing the WSAFCA Flood Department. So, you know, he can thank everybody for me as we go along. But I'd like to just mention one person. And that's Congresswoman Matsui. And I think we were very fortunate that she became our Congresswoman in 2012 because I think it really lifted our image there in DC and with the Corps here in Sacramento because of all the work she had done previously. And, you know, we worked well with our neighbors across the streets, across the river, SAFCA. We competed for funds, but with her help, you know, we made sure all of us got, you know, we got what we wanted and needed, you know, during that whole process. So I want to thank her for that. And I got my family here with me tonight. And I just wanted to mention my wife, Susan. Probably because, you know, in something like this, you're supposed to acknowledge your spouse. So, but also she was involved in flood protection here in West Sacramento way before me, in the late 80s and early 90s. She worked for the Corps of Engineers in Sacramento as a senior planner. And her project, one of her projects was the West Sacramento Project that happened at that time. And working with RD900, they went through a similar process that we went through later, but got authorization for a federal program, got it funded, and we had quite, you know, quite a bit of work done. And when it got done, we thought we had 400-year protection. But things changed, Katrina, and all you guys all know the stories. You know, we had to come back to the drawing board. And because of that early project, we were able to get the federal government's attention again. And we're able to work through the process to get to where we are today. So, thank you, Sue. So with that, just one last thing. I spent a lot of mornings sitting back in your guys' council chambers. And on your wall, you have signs that say all your priorities and they go back years. And all of them, or almost all of them, flood protection is the number one priority. And I think until the job's done, we got to continue with that. And I know you ladies with both RD900 and with the city here will continue it on. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have the pleasure of serving on the WSAFCA Board with Tom. And I think back to when we were with Councilmember Ocala, we're trustees. I remember when we were electing the Board Chair and we looked at each other and we were like, it can't be anybody else but Tom. You have been an incredible president. Thank you for your steadfast hand. You talk about being service to your community and it absolutely, you love West Sacramento. And I just appreciate the time that you've given the community to serve in this capacity. I don't think you give yourself enough credit for your knowledge base of flood protection in West Sacramento. There have been many meetings, and me being the newest trustee on the board, where there are conversations about the West Sacramento Project and years have gone past. And Tom's like, wasn't that the? And brings up some very specific item from five years ago. And staff's like, yes, absolutely. And it's just, it's so incredibly impressive. The amount of information that you've been able to process and retain and bring to the table to make sure that our community is safe. Because you're right, flood protection's been a number one priority to the city for the last 20 years. And it's so incredibly important. And you've been just such a wonderful steadfast hand in all of it. So just thank you for your service. I don't know what a meeting's going to be like without you. We're going to see you next Thursday. And then after that, you know, it's up to us to figure out what's next. So thank you very much for all your time and commitment to the community.
Thank you.
I also want to say thank you so much, a lot of gratitude for the time and dedication to WSAFCA. And you always asked a lot of great questions that all of a sudden I was like, I was going to ask that. And you asked it. And since I was a little timid about that when I first got on there. So I want to thank you for keeping us informed. And even when some of the things that went way over my head, I'd stay over and ask you those questions. You were always available, so thank you so much.
Well, we accomplished a lot together. A little different right now with now it's a federal project, but there's still a lot of work to keep track of to get to the end.
So I have not served on WSAFCA, but however, I do appreciate having strong levees as a resident and someone who's raising their family here. The thing that I think about with our commissions and with our boards at the county or city level that I think oftentimes people don't realize is that you often go unrecognized for very, very important work that you are just volunteering your time. And so what I would say, similar to my colleagues and reiterate, just thank you so much. Thank you for being one of our unsung heroes here in West Sacramento and for making us safer because that's exactly what you did.
Tom, you're going to be missed. It's a huge loss for us. But I know, you know, good things have to come to an end. And, you know, you're able to enjoy some time off and on your own. But we have truly benefited as a city, maintained, you know, our goals. And you saw them on our strategic plan. We'll be there for however long we needed to stay there. But you have had the vision and have held it steadfast and shared it with us as, you know, leadership, making sure that it was instilled in our thoughts and understanding the history. I remember we spent time going over what we needed to do when we didn't get the New Start money. And once that happened during COVID, you know, just being able to celebrate and, you know, was there present with you for the signing ceremony. Such a great moment in our city's history. And that's thanks to you and your determination to make sure that our city is protected as the number one, you know, just as far as whatever crisis we would ever have here as far as a climate action-related activity, it's going to be flood. And just the history of what you've seen in the past and what could happen. And your wife, who's also, Sue has also been very supportive in allowing for you to join us and you taking time off from work just to make sure that things were in place and it's had come to fruition. I'm sure you work closely with our staff and train them and giving them some guidance as well, as I have felt, even on other things like where was this old bridge that, you know, I heard about? You knew exactly where it was. Whipped out your phone and showed it to me. And I'm going to continue to tap your knowledge because I'm going to, you know, as we move forward on doing some projects, I think your history and knowledge is invaluable for the city. So thank you so much. And with that, I want to be able to go down and take a photo with you.
Like I said, I was glad I was able to contribute.
Thank you. Hold on, we're going to go take a photo with you. Next up is a presentation from one of our, you know, our Youth Climate Action Fund grant recipients here to share with us about the Youth Climate Action Board, Ms. Jasmine Garcia. Come on up.
Thank you. Jennifer, do you have the present? Perfect, thank you.
So excited to have you here.
Thank you, it's great to be here. Hi, I'm here presenting on behalf of the Youth Climate Action Board, based here in West Sacramento. And I'm just doing a quick impact report. Essentially what we've done over the past, it's been eight, seven, eight months that we've been in service. We've been doing stuff here in the community. And yeah, just a quick presentation. Next slide, please. Oh, perfect. Thank you. All right, move that. Oh, there you go. Move too far. No, I didn't. Okay. Okay, our board started with essentially some listening sessions, which I thought were important to any board that's starting up. Identifying what your community has and what it needs. Many of these listening sessions involved reaching out to community partners, including the Wonder Grove. Rachel from the Wonder Grove was amazing to talk to in terms of how youth are being, are really involved in outside environmental enrichment learning. She really let us know what her struggles and her issues were with starting it up, what she continues to do, what her successes were. That really helped us in knowing what exactly goes into running programs that are really necessary for youth education. And we also met with Alfred, which is one of our strongest partners here. We have him on our shirts too. He made our shirts. But we went to his garden and we had a great time learning about just how to, you know, run an organization that is so, he's so dedicated, how to nourish your plants. Many of our members are actually graduating and they were really interested. They're majoring in environmental science and chemical biology or something. So they were really interested in that. We also had seeds of solidarity. We had someone from NorCalResist, which is kind of the program that runs that, come to one of our meetings and talk about her passion. She's really, really passionate about her little farm that she has. And she was really great. And of course, we've worked with the city of West Sacramento, the county of Yolo. We've worked with Girl Scouts doing their, some of their major projects, which has been great to work alongside them. And then we just articulated three areas of need recently, which was youth empowerment and leadership, access to environmental education and sustainable community resources. And this really came from a lot of our listening sessions as well as some sessions we had with youth in the community in Yolo County to kind of ask them what they needed from us, what they thought was important. Wrong way. Okay. Here is a little bit about our funding overview, which I think it's necessary to paint a picture of what we're like. 100% of it goes back again to our youth. We secured over $10,000 in total funding. And I guess by we, more like me. I secured that within, I think, eight or nine months, which was incredible, just like support from the community, from organizations just across the world who are dedicated to progressing youth-driven initiatives. And really, this is 100% youth-driven. Absolutely no adult involvement unless it's like partners. And then we have distributed over $1,000 in youth stipends. Stipends are really important when I was creating this board just because I really, although volunteer opportunities are great, I feel that our youth should be given some money for their transportation, for their time. So we pay them $30 an hour. Our meetings are an hour, which is just great pay from what we've kind of talked about. It's a good amount. We've held eight regular meetings as well as other meetings that are not kind of official, but eight meetings. We were really, really lucky enough to have Blake from RD900 to help us. He's been great in helping us host that in his space. It's been really great. As well as we've been out in the garden during one of our meetings. It's always really fun and informative. And we take time to just understand our planet, our world, what environmental education looks like, what it looks like specifically for youth. 40-plus youth have expressed interest. We got dozens of applications. However, not many of them went through, which is something I want to talk about later. And then we did one climate-related bill. We actually talked to legislative directors from both the Assembly and the State Senate. I believe we talked to 14 of them, which was a lot of meetings. But really, this bill wasn't ever meant to be passed or anything. It was just because I thought it was very important. One of the most important lessons I have learned was how to propose a bill, what it takes to work with community partners to get something like that done. And I think that we learned a lot from that. We learned how to work with other people who have other interests that are completely different. Yeah, we just worked with a lot of people we didn't expect to during that time. And again, that leads to dozens of local partners involved, many, many people that we've talked to over these past seven months, just about all issues related to climate advocacy, environmental stewardship, which has been really great. And then in that graphic, you can see kind of the breakdown. More than 50% is spent on stipends. 21% spent on pilot program, which is something I'll talk about in the next slide. 9.3% spent on merch, which is kind of this shirt here. We spent about 9.3% of that. We give everyone a shirt, just kind of for publicity. And then we have 4.1% on events. And then we have 4.1% on events. We do big events, lots of flower making, plant, planting, germination, things like that. We really like to try to be hands-on when we're with youth because we find that that's how they respond best, which makes sense. 1.2% on publicity, printing out stuff, flyers, and then 6.9% on food, which is just, we give them food because it's at five o'clock, second Monday of each month, and, and they're really hungry. So we give them lots of food. Okay, here is some of the stuff we're working on right now. We're super, super excited to be working alongside city staff. Ryan from the Environmental Division of the city and RISA, we're working to do kind of a pilot program, what they kind of want to pitch to the city, a water and energy efficiency program, one that's run in a lot of different cities, counties across California, where you essentially analyze, we're going to analyze similar home energy and water efficiency programs, really just how to improve your energy use, which could be, and just, I don't know, weatherproofing your home, putting weather strips, putting aerators, different things that we've come up with, LED light bulbs. So, yeah, again, we, we're just kind of identifying that, comparing it. We have dozens and of different cities that we're comparing that. And then we're evaluating how they engage and incentivize residents to kind of be part of this, this program and how we can do that in our own city. So we're, we're definitely looking at that. We've spent a couple of meetings on that. And then designing a household audit kit, which would be like a kit that a resident of West Sacramento could get to improve the energy and water efficiency of their home. This is, again, something we're just kind of researching, perhaps piloting. And our goal is essentially to prepare a presentation for city staff. We've been meeting with them about every month, summarizing kind of the research methodology and the results of this, of our findings. And then perhaps establishing a water and energy efficiency program here, if that is a possibility. So it's been really great working with city staff to do this because this is not a project that many boards or especially youth boards get to take on, but our youth members have really proven that, that they can do it. So here I have just included a testimonial. It says, "Being part of the Youth Climate Action Board gave me a real voice in shaping local climate policy. I never thought I'd meet with community leaders or draft actual proposals until now." Here are some great pictures that we've taken over the past seven months. We have one of our events, a couple of meetings, just a short snippet of a lot of things we've, we've done. Actually, we have Rachel from The Wonder Grove there in one of the pictures. But, yeah, this is, a lot of, a lot of youth have engaged with our programs and it's something we like to put on for them. Okay, so now some of our takeaways, kind of why I'm here. Despite offering stipends to youth, youth recruitment has been a challenge. You know, it's a great opportunity from what we see, $30 to basically say, you don't even have to participate, you know, as long as you take away some knowledge from our discussions, that is great for us. We just really want some education to youth, even basic minimal education, on why environmental stewardship is important, why, you know, our climate action plan, which is currently in the midst here, which I had talked to Ryan about when we first met, why that's important, why we should really care. So it, it's really been a persistent challenge in getting youth recruitment. And this is something that we really need the community's help, city council's help with, really anyone's help with, because a lot of our senior members are again going off to UC Santa Cruz, Davis, a ton of different UCs. Their board renewal is, is a top priority. We need more people to come in in order to keep this sustained. And then community support is, is again, just critical. If people want to come, support us, I think the most important thing is bring someone in, help us spread the message, be there. And I think the community support has been amazing in terms of everyone's willing to help us, whether it be provide us a location, come and speak with us. And again, that was actually a challenge, finding a meeting location, but thanks to the mayor's help, thankfully, we were able to find RD900, which has been great. And then Three Sisters Gardens recently opened up a new location where we can hold our meetings. So, yeah, again, if, if you have anyone who might be interested in this, please let them know. Next slide. Here is our email, they can email us, that would be great. And we are more than happy to have them on our board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Open up for any questions or comments?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that because I've had a young woman, she is with the API Intern Program, and she was very interested in getting some of the interns into this program as well. And I know she spoke with Erin, and Erin said that that was something that they're going to explore for next year. So, thanks for doing that outreach. I think we're going to have some folks in for next year.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no questions, just some feedback.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for being here tonight. First of all, love the compensation. I completely agree with you that volunteer opportunities are great, but compensating volunteers for their work is important. And so thank you for making that happen as part of the budget. And want to compliment you for reaching out to The Wonder Grove. A lot of times when we talk about youth, people just think about high schoolers, and the youth is everyone. And The Wonder Grove, especially at their Wiggle Worms Playdates on Sunday morning at Heritage Oaks Parks, focuses on kids from two to nine years old. And partnering with Rachel and getting that information about what our younger kids in the community need, I think is really powerful. And so thank you for thinking outside of the box and making that partnership happen. And then I, I just want to compliment you for a second. You're the Jasmine that applied to the Parks Commission, correct?
Yes.
You have an incredible resume and you've done just absolutely incredible work. And thank you for your commitment to this. It is so fun to see you in action tonight. So thank you for all your work you've done, and it's just wonderful to see you shine.
Thank you.
Yes. You stole my thunder.
No, I said it when we reviewed the commissions that evening and night, and I think you actually reached back out to me afterwards. Very impressed with you, your resume and all the work that you do in our community. So thank you not only for this, but also the, the other work that, that you do. A couple of suggestions, and you may already be doing this. However, I see Justine here. Hi. And we have our, our Home Run Program. And so hopefully, if you guys aren't already coordinating together, I see her nodding, that that is definitely a, a pipeline. And then getting tapped into the high school as well. I'm, I'm assuming that you, that you already are. If not, there's lots of groups that potentially you could reach out to, including my own organization that works within the high school that, that I think could help in regards to. I, I think this is a bit of a call to action, which is you're looking for potential applicants and, and recruitment there. So again, great, great work. Sad that you're not on our Park Commission yet, but my, my, I, I continue to hold out hope that we'll be able to get you there.
Thank you.
Jasmine, this is incredible. Thank you so much for taking the time to come and present to us all of the activities and reaching out for, you know, attracting more youth participation, just getting the outreach done is, you know, it is, it is hard to, you know, keep that momentum, especially when the youth that you, that are participating are going to be traveling to their new school. And I was thinking of the Community College, they're going to open up a sustainability division there. And I'll, I'll try to get the connection for you using this email to, you know, try to attract college students to participate, because I know that, I think that it's not just high school, right? It's a little good, up until like age 24.
Yes, we are offering it to anyone, really, young people.
That's great. And, you know, also with our Yolo County Office of Education and our Washington, you know, college, middle school, so our college there in Brighton-Broderick, we can, you know, connect with them as well. So we'll, we'll continue to work together to get more participate, participation. If there is like an email, like blurb you can give, you can send me that I can do some outreach and assist you with that via email, the contacts that I, I mentioned, that'll be good to have.
Perfect, that's great.
Keep up the great work. So appreciate you and everything you've done. This is very exciting and welcome to helping us out with the projects you have in collaboration with the city. Looking forward to that. I have another project with, you know, that I'd like to see what I can do to work with you, with your kit. I'll reach out to you for something else.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have our Consent Agenda Item 5 through 20, and going to pull 16 and 20 for, I believe there are comments from our West Sacramento Firefighter Association. Are there any other requests to speak from items 5 through 20? I mean, other items you'd like to pull? All right. Kaisa, is Kaisa here? For item 16? Oh, there you are, I can't see you behind Paul. Okay, there you are.
You mean item 18?
18? Oh, sorry, 18. Sorry.
That's why I didn't, you know, I hear my cue.
So, item 18 is the Updated Age Friendly Action Plan. Can you just give us a few highlights on the updates?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Kaisa Miller, for the record, and I work for the City Manager's Office as a senior, what, program manager? That's what I'm doing. And so we recently updated the last one. So we started in 2015. We added the AARP's Network of Age Friendly Communities. And then right after that, the team began to write up the first Age Friendly Action Plan. That was adopted by City Council in 2017. That one ended in about 2020, and so now kind of we're in a weird spot then, so we're, we're back at it now. We were at the Parks Commission, or was at the Parks Commission in April, and they recommended, or we, I did a presentation on the updates. And so there's just a couple of difference, differences. We just refocused a little bit from the last time. We did some more outreach and we came up with a kind of a new set of, of goals. We, in all of the different outreach event that we did, really the top priorities that came from seniors really were about streets, sidewalk maintenance and public safety. So you'll see why, when we have the different categories, there are more goals in certain categories than others. So connectivity is one of the larger grouping of goals. And that is primarily by my team in the Community Development Department and Transportation. That's probably, many of those you'll be hearing and have been hearing a lot about and will be continuing to hear more about those. And so we also have some safety elements of the goals. One of them is one of the programs that I have the opportunity to work with, with the Safe at Home programs. We're approximately 60 homes, residents that we have been able to connect with. We're re-upping our contract as we speak right now, looking to expand a little bit on that project, the scope slightly, based on our experience of what we've been working with so far. Very excited about that expansion. And, and then the, the latter part of our goals, the last two, they're not less important, but about quality of life. And those are all of the programs and offerings that we have provided for a long time, and we just want to make sure we're still having them in there as a priority. But this is really just a lens. It's not the only things that we're focusing on, just like we were talking about earlier, having a strategic plan, having a plan put together, making sure you're staying focused. And then we'll revisit and we will see where we're at the next time, and we'll reprioritize and reconnect out with the community and see what's going on at that time.
Thank you.
Anything else that I didn't answer?
Uh, Councilmember, I'll call.
No, I just wanted to say thank you so much for this program. When I talk with my mother and other seniors, one of the things that resonates a lot is isolation and loneliness. This is great for, on the quarterly newsletter, how are you sending that out? I, I know it's printed material, but what base do you have? You know, it's getting seniors.
So in all of, in a lot of different ways, we, we connect with seniors and we, whenever we do, we tend to ask them, like, are you getting this information? So the community center is a wonderful way for us to, you know, stay with, the seniors come in for different services or being connected to different services, and that's one of the things that they ask them. Would you like to be on this? Anytime we're out at one of our events, when I saw you at the Senior Resource Fair, I mean, that's what we're doing, is, you know, taking new folks on there. If anyone calls in and I'm talking to them on the phone, I just ask them about it. So there's quite a different ways, and we just keep adding, you know, people to that along the way.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kaisa. This is, I'm so excited about this update that we have here to approve tonight. So thank you for all your work. I know it was years in the making.
Yes.
Item number 20, that is our Consideration of Adoption of the Total Tentative Agreement on Economic Terms for the Successor Memorandum of Understanding between the City of West Sacramento and the City of West Sacramento Firefighters Association, and Adoption of Resolution 25-73, Approving Amendments to the Budget for Fiscal Year 2526. And I believe we have our representative from the Firefighters Association who would like to speak. Representatives, plural. Please come on up to the podium and share your thoughts.
Good evening, everyone. I know we all know each other very well, but I'll do an introduction real quick. My name is Miguel Altamirano with the West Sacramento Firefighters Association President, and I've been a firefighter with the department for about 20 years. We also have Anil Khan here. He is the West Sacramento Firefighters Association Treasurer. He's also about a 10-year firefighter here with West SAC. Then we also have Captain Greg Fauntz, who is the Vice President on the 522 Executive Board for the Sacramento Area Firefighters. So I think we all have a lot that we'd like to say, but honestly, Greg Fauntz, before he made it up to the 522 Executive Board, he was our Association President, and he's been involved with our, our union work for about probably 15 years. So he's been at this a long time, and I feel it's appropriate to kind of give him the microphone first here to, to say some key words. So, come on up, Greg.
Great. Come on up.
I went first last time. I was hoping the clock was running and Miguel took all three minutes of it. So, again, Greg Fauntz, VP, West, our local 522 of districts. It's kind of a surreal moment for me to be up here, the, one of the first times I was in this room. It was in support of my captain at the time, Wally Enos, and he was the Association President. He was up here speaking about Engine 45, trying to prevent layoffs and the shutdown of the engine. And ultimately, after that, the fire department was pretty gutted and minimally staffed. So it is, it's pretty amazing to be able to stand up here with a new chapter starting and being a fire captain in the same department, representing the same union, and unfortunately, around the same age, and being able to say, "Engine 45 is back in service. We just had 11 firefighters graduate the largest regional fire academy last week." And with the ratification of this contract, the city is reinvesting in its fire department. So I couldn't be happier. Assistant City Manager Amanda Berlin, I know you were, I know firefighters think differently over the years. We've been in a lot of meetings together, so thank you for getting this thing over the line. Council, thank you for listening to us and delivering on your promises to make our fire department and take it to the best place it's been in my career in 23 years. So I can't wait to see what the future holds. And Erin Laurel, City Manager Erin Laurel, we've met quite a few times over the years, probably as much as you wanted to meet with a labor rep. I apologize for that. But there's one meeting sticks out for me. It was a while ago, and you said, "From labor's view, how can we make this fire department better?" And I had your standard answers, and one of them really was just, hey, for once, we'd like to be average pay, average benefits, average training, you know, average opportunity. And you stopped me in that meeting, and then you said, "What do I need to do to make this a destination department?" And I would like to congratulate you because as of tonight, West Sacramento is a destination department. And in fact, I was at an executive board meeting this morning, representing, it was at the 522 E-Board. We represent over, like, it's around 2,000 firefighters regionally. And I had people pulling me aside on breaks going, "Hey, do you think West SAC is going to be taking laterals in the next couple of years?" So I'd like to just, yeah. So, I'd like to congratulate everyone in this room. Thank you for hearing us, and thank you for making the changes.
Hello again. My name's Anil Khan. I'm a firefighter with West Sacramento and a treasurer, like Miguel said earlier. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm not a public speaker. I'd rather run into a burning building than talk in public, to be honest. But, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, thank you very much. We appreciate your guys' support. The morale is at its peak right now, and hope that it continues. Again, thank you, thank you for support. And the A-City staff, Caitlin, Caitlin and her staff, it's, they've been awesome with us. They gotta, sorry, you gotta put up with our questions, but thank you for everything. Thank you for all the support, everybody.
I'll second with what Anil Khan said. I gotta thank Amanda Berlin, Caitlin, Leanne, Laura Isana. I know she's not here tonight. But, but we had a good exchange in getting this contract knocked out. So, I appreciate you guys so much and your efforts. I felt like there was a lot of, a lot of hours that went into this one, probably more than usual. But we couldn't be happier with the result, and we appreciate, we appreciate your efforts on the contract. Also, gotta mention Measure O. I know a lot of this wouldn't have been possible without getting that done. So, big thank you to City Council, City Manager Erin Laurel for getting that through. Gotta thank the citizens of West SAC for actually trusting us to give us that, you know, that extra 1% sales tax, and to, you know, get the support for the fire department, and infrastructure for the city. To say that, all the police, the police department and the fire department has the highest-paid workforce in, you know, of all the cities in the region is amazing. It's been, I was unthinkable a few years ago. So, appreciate everyone's efforts for getting that over the finish line. Also, gotta recognize Vernos Pizziolo and Dante Early for being willing to come out to Fire Ops 101, which is an event that was put on in front of the state capitol, where you can be a firefighter for a day and kind of see that some of the arduous work that were put through between live fire training, climbing a ladder, forcible entry stuff. And I think everyone was able to kind of get a better appreciation for what it is we do. So, couldn't be more appreciative of that. And I got to say also, I was up here speaking about a year ago, talking about the contract. We passed that, it was a one-year contract. And at that time, we had a 100% yes vote to ratify from the association. And this contract also achieved a 100% yes vote. So, that's two back-to-back. I know it's gonna be tough to keep that going, but, and I love to hear that. But, but no, we're appreciative where we're at. Again, I was unthinkable in the past. And again, with that, I know Erin Laurel is kind of a big piece behind this to get Measure O on the ballot, came up with the language, emphasized infrastructure, the workforce, and public safety. So, yeah, so, so thank you. You're a man of your word. You did what you said you were gonna do. So, thank you. I think you have an agenda item for maybe a raise later on tonight. I don't think it's enough. You should give this guy everything you possibly can. So, but, but thank you. I know, I'm gonna make you turn around right now. No, but we appreciate you. Thank you.
Councilmembers, please, your hall.
Thank you, item number. Since we're reflecting on meetings, I remember the first meeting I had as an elected official with the Firefighters Association, it was with Miguel at Frankhead. And we talked a lot about the history of the department and needs. And I remember saying to him, "Give us the opportunity to do right by you guys." And tonight really feels full circle that we've done that. A couple of meetings ago, I had the honor of presenting a proclamation recognizing May 4th as International Firefighters Day. And it was a very special, meaningful meeting. I love proclamations. I think they're very, they're meaningful. I hope we can continue doing that. You mentioned the morale being high, felt it in the room. Proclamations don't pay the bills, and actions speak louder than words. And so, me supporting Measure O, that was an action. When we campaigned for Measure O, we asked the community a fundamental question, like, "What kind of city do we want to be?" And we answered that, is we want to prioritize public safety, ample staffing, competitive wages. We want to be a city where the fire department has the resources, support, and personnel needed to do the job well. When we had the push-in ceremony for Engine 45, I said in my remarks, "With Measure O passing, this is no longer a conversation about wanting, it's about becoming." And tonight, we are becoming, and that is huge. We are becoming the city that pays the firefighters the highest wages in the region. We are a city that honors commitment with longevity pay for those who've dedicated years of service. The city, we are, become a city that respects the physical and emotional toll of the job by expanding sick leave, ensuring time for recovery and rest. And those are just the highlights. These are huge strides forwards, and I'm really proud of what we're doing tonight. But none of this wouldn't have been possible with West SAC, without the West Sacramento Firefighters Association. Captain Altamirano, Captain Greg Fauntz, firefighter Khan. Your education, your advocacy has been so incredibly powerful. You are representing your fire family so well. Thank you for all of your work to bring just a stronger department to our community, keeping our community safer. This is an entire win for our city, and I'm just so proud to be up here with my colleagues supporting this tonight.
Oh, man. We also had a conversation at Frankhead. Do you guys remember that? Uh huh, uh huh, okay. So, what, I'm very honored and proud to be where we are at right now for our city. I, I know that sometimes we have previously had very, very lean years. And our last contract, as you pointed out, we, we did everything we possibly could within that budget to make sure that our firefighters knew, one, how much we appreciated you, but also, we wanted to make sure that we were paying you what you should be paid. But that was all we had, right? And, and we were really clear about that. There was, there was nothing left for us to be able to increase that. And that's where Measure O came. Thank you all for believing in us and for taking the chance. I was at the Fire Academy graduation. I also went to the Fire Academy and got a chance to see our recruits then, and now are firefighters, going through all of the, the tests and the hard work that, that they go through in order to make sure that our community stays safe. However, for Measure O, one of the things that we talked about after graduation was the fact that you all suffered a loss during that campaign. And I remember turning to you and saying, "Hey, you know, what can we do? Can we take on more? I, I don't want to be asking of your, of your brethren to be walking and campaigning while they are also mourning." And I remember you all saying, "But this is important for all of us. This is important for our future, and we must keep going." And I just remember being so touched, because it is the truest form of service to our community above all. And you really epitomized that and continue to epitomize that. And so, I'm very, very proud to be able to support this. It is only because of Measure O. I'm very proud to, Miguel, your point on our police as well. One of the commitments that we made in campaigning for Measure O was we would immediately turn and invest in our public safety. And that's exactly what this council has done. And so, once again, thank you for trusting us. Thank you to the community for trusting that we would actually do and live up to our commitment and what we said. That doesn't always happen in this region when measures are passed. And it was really, really important, I think, not only to me, but to all of us, that we stay true to the essence and spirit of what that is. And this contract is a representation of that. So, thank you.
Councilmember, I'll call him. I think you've all spoken and said everything that could be said. I want to thank you all for everything that you've given this community. Well, it's been a long time coming that we arrived where we're at today, to have unanimous support by the City Council here. And Greg, you, you led the way, you paved the way with your steadfast determination. Little hothead at times, but, but, but you, you got your message across. And, and I will say that, you know, having, having those one-on-one conversations over the years, I never took anything for granted, never took any of you for granted. Knowing that you, you all, not only your family, stand by you, but make the sacrifices with you, but, but your brothers and, you know, sister you have there, and growing, maybe, in that way, too. But you have 11 more now jumping in to your fire stations, working side by side with you, and doing that rotation. I know you've been holding up the, you know, Engine 45, doing, doing all you can to maintain that. Safer Grant, first, first round and second round coming to do successfully. So, so grateful, you know, Greg, I think you helped out again that get 522 onboard to review that and tighten up some of, some of the application, you know, sections that needed to get worked on, and we were successful. We just need to make sure we get all that money. So, so with that, we are gonna continue. In, in, in our budget, there are so many areas, you know, little things that make a huge difference in your quality of, of living while you do work. Yes, you do work, you know, 48 hours, you know, and, and round the clock, it's not an eight-hour day. But it is a, a very hard, you know, time that you are in the fire station, sometimes not even sleeping. Little things like weight training and, you know, getting, you know, just the, the resources and support, you know, the, the medical, you know, wellness checks, cancer screening. You are our firefighters. You do make those sacrifices. I do see that, you know, even with like two, two homes getting burnt down, you do need the right equipment to protect you, but also who you're out there to protect. And so, that is, is what I see in you. That is what I, I have appreciated the most, is your dedication to the community. You know that those you go out and take care of, they're, they're like your mother or your father. They're, they're one of you, and, and you serve. And everybody that has received your service has been extremely grateful. And I'm hoping now that we can maintain that, you know, appreciation in perpetuity here on this council. We'll work hard to memorialize it more often, which is why I'm glad you're up here speaking, all three of you. You know, I know that when, when I first ran, I, I, as Councilmember Early described, a loss. I left my, my father's deathbed for an interview with the Firefighters Association, came up from LA. Didn't know if he was gonna be gone when I came back. And came, he came, you know, I came back, and that same day, he passed away. And so, earning that endorsement from you and your support meant a lot to me. And, and you know I'm gonna stand by your side, continuing to fight for you, making sure that you get everything you need, and, and you have a good quality of life in, in the fire stations and, and round the clock, and getting the, the care you need to take care of your families as well. So, thank you for all you do. Thank you for, you know, standing firm, never giving up, and, and reminding us of what's important for our community, because that's what you're doing it for. It's not just yourselves, it's for our community. So, thank you. All right, anything else from anybody? And with that, we have Consent Agenda Items 5 through 20. Tom of, all right. Mayor Protim, Pizziolo moved, and Councilmember, I'll call a second. And Madam Clerk, please call the role. Oh, there, one more. Are there any comments, public, members of the cup, publicly speak?
We have no requests to speak on any items on the consent agenda.
All right, please call the role.
Councilmember, I'll call him.
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Protim, Pizziolo Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. I plan to, I'm going to be pulling up Agenda Item 26 under Finance, which is Consideration of Resolution 25-71 Adopting the Operations and Maintenance and Capital Improvement Program Budgets for Fiscal Year 2526. And I think we have Roberta coming up, our Finance Director.
All right. I thought I was last. I was really banking on the fact that everybody was gonna want to go home. So, I have a very brief presentation, which is good, because you've got a, a big agenda after this. So, good evening. I am your Finance Director, Roberta Raper. I'm here tonight to present our Fiscal Year 2526 Budget for consideration by council. I want to make sure I know how to use this. There we go. I mentioned my presentation is brief. It'll focus primarily on changes to the budget, outside influences which are impacting our budget, process, and timing. And the report you received is, is very detailed. So, I, I won't spend much time at all on the numbers and the, the individual requests. I will instead allow time for you to ask questions and lead the, the presentation, the timeframe, however you wish. So, first, what are we asking? We're asking you to consideration, or to consider and approve Resolution 25-71, which will adopt the Operations and Maintenance and Capital Improvement Budget for Fiscal Year 2526. That is the timeframe from July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026, along with the authorized positions and the salary schedule. So, you might be asking why we're considering a one-year budget when we've always adopted a two-year budget? So, I've got a little bit of information on that. There are several reasons. First, and is this still going?
Yeah.
Okay. First, since the pandemic, we've been in front of council with budget adjustments a lot. I have done budget more than, in the last few years than I've done in, in a long time. So, we've come with not only the normal midterm adjustments, which are our adjustments that we do between the first and the second years of the budget, which are typically expected, but we've also brought mid-year adjustments every year. And, and even the midterm adjustments are getting to be much more significant. That alone eliminates the economies of scale of doing a two-year budget, because the changes are not just in, in capital projects and, and little things that have come out throughout the years, but it's in labor costs and other things that are, that requires to redo a lot of what we did originally. Additionally, we are implementing a new budget system. And while that budget system does, I confirmed before we purchased it, does accommodate a two-year budget, a lot of the functionality that was, that was desired and the reason we purchased it, it doesn't work well with a two-year budget. There are workarounds, it makes it very complicated. And finally, the economic environment, at least currently, and forecast into the future, is volatile. So, we'll talk about a little bit more of that on, on the next slide, some of the more significant impacts to our budget. But the unknowns that I mentioned, which used to pop up between budget years, are increasingly popping up, you know, next week and next month. And so, making it really difficult and inefficient to, to try to predict what next year will look like. So, for all of those reasons, and, and the fact that we've had so much going on this year, we just adopted Measure O in March, there, the timeframe doesn't allow. This year, we are proposing a one-year budget. And ideally, that is something that I would like to continue going forward. Of course, that is up to the council. So, that's why we've got a one-year budget today. So, looking at economic influences, I mentioned there are some significant influences to our local budget. Sales tax, while showing a slight projected increase in the documents proposed to you tonight. I just got some very preliminary first-quarter numbers for the year. And it looks like they could very well come in under that budget. And not only under that budget, but under the projection for this year. That would be the third year in a row that we're seeing a reduction in sales tax revenues year over year. And with the adoption of Measure O, that is a more significant issue, right? Because we, we rely on it a lot more. So, that does impact the general fund and the tax measure fund. So, the general fund is slightly more shielded due to the greater diversification of revenue sources in that fund. But if I recall correctly, I think sales tax makes up about a third of our general fund revenues. As we see a slowdown in the real estate market, too, and I'm not gonna say that it's not doing well by any means, but it is slowing a bit, we can expect a smaller increase in year-over-year property tax revenues as well, and a reduction in supplemental property tax and documentary transfer tax, the revenues that, that align with home sales. I've mentioned in the past that these impacts are more delayed, so we have more time to respond. And this is the time we have to prepare, right? This is, this is where we know things are slowing down, and so, we know that the growth is going to slow over the next couple of years. So, on the expenditure side, we're seeing significant increases almost across the board, more pronounced with fuel, utilities, for sure, construction costs, software and technology costs, and of course, labor and benefits. And outside of our general fund, our utility funds require rate increases to continue to fund operational and infrastructure needs. The last study was adopted in 2017, and the last rate adjustment was in 2021. And so, there's obviously been growth in expenditures since then. And then, of course, labor negotiations are underway for several groups, as you're aware. And congratulations on successful adoption. for several groups, as you're aware, and congratulations on successful adoption of an MOU with the fire group. And then there are a number of operational and capital needs which continue to be reviewed by staff with the goal of bringing what we can recommend with our limited funding capacity to the council in the fall for consideration. So tonight's budget is, is very small. It's essentially a, a status quo budget. What do we need tomorrow to do what we're doing today? Along with a handful of priority things that can't wait for the fall, but there are a lot of other requests that have been submitted that we're working our way through and, and figuring out what we can do and, and we'll bring those back to you. So with that, tonight's presentation will be fairly brief. We're just going to give a brief general fund update, me, myself and I, I don't know why I said we. Tax measure funds, we'll look at the supplemental budget proposals and impacts at a very high level and, and then the recommended action. So, so general fund, the general fund, this is for the current year, 2425. We had budgeted revenues of 85.4 million, budgeted expenses of 84.5 million, which gave us a projection for a $900,000 surplus for the year. Our revised projections are, are very nice, 85.9 million in revenues, 83.3 million in expenses, and we're projecting about 2.6 million for a surplus this year. It's made up from a couple of different things. One, investment revenues are doing really well right now. That is also very hard to predict. We haven't gotten the, the end of the year fair market value adjustment, which could go either way. Right now, they're doing very well. And we've had a lot of, we've seen an increase in work order reimbursement revenues for our capital project staff, who spends a lot of time implementing capital projects and gets reimbursed for their time from those projects. And so those are two sources that have increased our revenue. On the expenditure side, we've seen savings due to vacant positions, right? Their labor savings primarily. A portion is vacant positions and a portion is increased charging out by recreation staff for ACIS and other programs. So we're seeing an, an increased labor offset there. So, current year, looking pretty good. So 2526, we expect revenues of about 86.6 million to fund expenses of about 84.2 million, and that is before considering the supplemental budget proposals tonight. So that gives us a proposed budget surplus of about 2.6 million. I might have that number wrong. It might be 2.4. I might have those flip-flopped because that looks like the same number to me. Anyway, 2.6 million. After the supplementals, if everything is approved tonight, we would have a, a budget surplus of about 1.1 million for the year, which is still good. It's a, it's a balanced budget. It just doesn't leave a lot for ongoing expenses. The largest request for the general fund is to move a portion of the subsidy for the lighting and landscape district, which if you recall a few years ago, was transferred to measure K, which has capacity and a, and a category specifically for that purpose. But the utility costs within the lighting and landscaping district have ballooned. They, they've gone up quite a bit. So at the time we made this transfer was about 800 or 900,000 a year. The subsidy this, this year is 1.5 million. And the measure K fund does not have enough to handle that on an ongoing basis, especially as we're seeing sales tax reductions. So we're proposing to shift basically the growth in, in that subsidy to the general fund. Maintain, maintain the base amount and measure K, shift the growth to the general fund. That's the biggest adjustment to the general fund. There are also some positions that are fully funded. We'll talk about in just a moment. All right. So, the one-time fund balance prior to consideration of supplementals in the general fund is 5.3 million, projection. After approving the supplementals, which is primarily, there's about 2, 2.2 million in one-time and CIP requests, 2 million in CIP requests primarily, the ending fund balance would be 3.1 million. And that would be funds available to fund one-time items in the fall. Moving on, measure O. So measure O expects revenues of 20.1 million or thereabouts for 2526 to fund total expenses of 22.4 million. That is in deficit for the year, but so much of that is one-time. There's about 9.5 million of that is for CIP projects. Two CIP projects, one is 5 million towards the road reconstruction rehabilitation program and four and a half million towards a park, furniture fixtures, turf, all the things, replacement program to, to do work in all the parks in the city. And then the rest of the, the rest of the budget projections here for measure O are appropriating the funds for 2526 that were presented to you in that five-year forecast that we presented in March. So I mentioned at that time, we were just adopting the budget for the current year. We're just bringing back and, and asking you to adopt the budget for next fiscal year. And measure O has a balance, again, if you recall, because of the, the loan from measure B, and so it will have an ending balance of about 483,000. There is an updated five-year plan for measure O in your, in your packet as well. The tax measure funds, this just gives a, a brief slide of the tax measure funds and there are projected balances at the end of 2526. The only requests really outside of what I mentioned for measure K, that reduction, and measure O is a $400,000 funding from measure E towards a CIP project, but I don't recall the name. And this slide gives you just a breakdown of the supplemental requests overall by category. So 22.6 million in net overall requests, 16.7 million of that is for capital projects, again, nine and a half for measure O, 4 million of that is water fund projects, which if you recall in March, we had to reduce budget in several of those projects that wasn't going to be spent right away to meet our debt covenant requirements, given the, the delay in, in setting new rates. So we are adding that, that funding back to those projects this year. 1.5 million in one-time ONM, 500,000 net personnel costs, and we'll, we'll show you what that looks like in just a moment. 2.2 million vehicles and equipment, 1.8 million supplies and services. And again, majority of that is measure O. This slide just breaks it down by funding source to show you that the majority is measure O. And then this slide shows you the personnel request. So outside of, of those, a couple of things that I've mentioned, the, the next biggest thing, the really only significant change in this budget is the proposal to add four new positions. Three of those are in the capital projects department. There is an asterisk there because they're general fund positions. They're necessary to carry out EIFD and measure O and other projects that we want to get done over the next few years, and they are fully reimbursed by charges to those projects. So there is no impact to the general fund. And then a new assistant city manager position is proposed in the city managers department. That is part of the general support services fund and those costs are allocated out based on support provided to all of our funds. We're also proposing to move the capital projects GIS team to the IT division, which just makes sense. And there are two HR recommended reclassifications. There's an error on the slide. One of them is flood and that is fully reimbursed by WSEFAK. The other is not sustainability. I think that is actually IT. And the net personnel-related requests are 368,000. Oh, it adds four positions. Our, our total employee count, full-time employee count would be 496.55 after that change. And this just shows you the 2526 general fund balance for reserves. So at the end of the year, I've projected if everything is approved, 3.1 million in fund balance for the general fund, 2.2 million in the budget stabilization reserve, which is remaining somewhat steady, 14 million in the general reserve, which actually gets us to about 18%. And that is projected to get there right now, just from interest revenue. So without a contribution from the general fund, which is great. And then the staffing continuity reserve remains untouched at 500,000. However, we are, we are really, really close to fully staffed and having really good progress and success in our recruitments. And so if that is going to be tapped, it's going to be tapped this year. So that concludes my presentation. Again, we're asking you to approve resolution 25-71, which adopts the budget for the fiscal year 2526, approves the authorized position list and approves the salary schedule. And with that, I'd like to open it up to the council for questions and discussion.
Any questions among council members?
Yeah. Thank you, Roberta, for your presentation.
Can you hear me? I've been told my microphone's not working.
I think you need to get closer.
Lena.
Lena.
You need to go back to your two mics again.
It's very awkward. Okay, Roberta, thank you for your presentation. Let's talk a little bit about the sales tax decline. You'd mentioned you pulled quarterly reports. Tell me a little bit about, if you can share what you saw. If I'm correct, Erin and I were actually talking about this earlier today. The annual reports are public, but quarterly are confidential. Is that what?
No, they're, the, the detailed information is confidential. We can't provide essentially like business secrets, right? You can't, I can't tell you how much particular business is generating. So the information that we can provide and our new, our new consultant is, is, is giving us a, a public, a council report basically that can give you in the public all the information that is not confidential. We don't have our first report yet from them. So what I, what I received was, at the end of the quarter, all, all the data, the returns are sent to CDTFA. Once CDTFA, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, which administers the sales tax, gets all of that, our consultants get the data and then they analyze it and work on projections. They have not done any of the analysis and worked on projections. All they've done is compiled and said, this is what you got last quarter. One of those does have a projection of sorts in it and the projection is lower than what I received the last quarter. But because I don't have full information, I, I'm not relying on it yet. Also, this data is only through the end of March and so won't include baseball. However, our consultants have said that their projections do include baseball. We differ on, on what we think that looks like. And in fact, this, this consultant and our old consultant differ a little bit on what they think that looks like. So we're wanting to do more work to dig into that. And that's why I'm not proposing that we reduce the numbers I'm giving you tonight. I'm just saying that, hey, it, it, it still looks like it's not really recovering yet, but we don't have baseball numbers yet either. And, and so this year looks okay. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of taking a wait and see approach to next year. But I just want to alert you to the fact that, I mean, they're pretty volatile and so it could come in lower than what I'm projecting.
Just, just for council's general awareness, so I think going back to your question, while the, the reports can't disclose individual business, sales tax, like quarter to quarter, it does break it down by sector. So that's something that, you know, as we receive those reports, we meet with our consultant and kind of do a deeper dive on if there's, if there's overall trends in the city around certain sectors. So for example, general retail versus auto sales. So we can kind of see within, within those numbers, are there things that are more volatile and then do we need to make adjustments downward going forward? So I think by the time-
Doing some geocoded, looking at certain areas so we can track sort of the areas around the, the ball field and kind of what those are doing so we can get a better picture and other, other sort of areas.
Right.
So we'll have a lot of that information that we can share when we get our next report that we don't have.
And, and the reason Roberta's saying, when we talk about the baseball season, obviously, the first quarter numbers of, of this fiscal year don't tell you anything because there were, the games didn't start until really April. So the April to, the June quarter will be more telling and we'll work together and figure out the best way to kind of communicate that information to the council. So I think that kind of gets to your question to, how are you going to see what those trends look like? So we can provide those up forward.
I, I'd like to add to that. It might be a little premature for me to say this now, but it's been a goal of mine for a long time, to provide quarterly updates to the council. With the implementation of our new budget system, we're, we will be able to get more real-time data in, in a, in a format that we can present. And so it's my goal, not, not with, because I'll be in front of you in the fall with a budget and I can provide a, a report then, but likely after the first of the year, at the end of the second quarter, that we'll start providing some quarterly updates to council so you can see how those things are faring throughout the year. And so if we need to pivot or make adjustments, we'll be able to do that with, with just more advanced notice and, and more insight. We'll have more opportunity to, to touch base on those things.
That, that's wonderful and really helpful. And I love the concept of geocoding and looking at specific areas and seeing trends too. So thank you for working on that. That'll be great. There, there is, and I don't know where it is. We just got this big old packet.
That's your budget book, Madam Mayor.
Our big old budget book.
It's got all of the detailed, it's huge, but it's got all of the detailed reports. So I hope, I hope that is giving you-
Erin did show me something in there and I can't find it. I've been looking for it, Erin. Is, they were additional police officer positions.
You approved those in March.
Oh, you know, I, I believe you're referring to the, the, the changes to the authorized position list?
Yes.
So yes, what you're referring to, I believe it's, it's worth pointing out.
Yes.
Roberta mentioned earlier, when you approved all the measure O expenses in April or March, whenever that was.
March 19.
Yeah, you approved the ones that were going into effect right then. The, the police positions, I believe, fell into the category of-
They approved both. There, there was two, two levels. In March, you approved the positions that were going to affect right then. There might've been 39 total. 18 of them are actually going to affect July 1st. You approved those in March as well. So what we did at that time was said, these are the ones we're doing now. These are the ones that we're doing in July, but we want to start recruiting to get them filled as quickly as possible. So we asked you to approve them in March.
Very. All right. So in, in that particular item, I do want to elevate awareness. There was this conversation about an SRO at Washington Unified School District. And within this group of police officers that are being hired, which is great, we're getting them in, in, you know, we're trying to recruit either laterals or, or new people. We're, this is going to be the opportunity, but the key element for an SRO is getting an MOU. And that is, I think, the key element that is being discussed. We, we had a two-by-two school board meeting with them earlier this weekend. That is something that we had shared and we just, I just wanted to, you know, just share that for now, that that is probably the best way to do this process, to be able to hire. And our priority is to hire, to get them out on the street. That experience is significant, but they can be one of the, from one of those tapped. We don't have to have a separate budget item for an SRO from, you know, to, you know, fill that position with the partnership with the school district. Wanted to mention that.
Yeah.
I want to make sure I don't do a Brown Act. That's not what this is, right?
I can give a little more context to that. Just to stay within-
Are we allowed to talk about it?
In, in broad term, sure. So let me, let me go ahead and expand on that. So the discussion right now is that, you know, the district has made the request for that position. I think the point here is that I think the mayor's alluding to, the council's priority with measure O has been to bolster patrol. And the, I think it's 12 or 13 new sworn positions that are part of the measure O budget are intended to do just that. I think what that also allows you to do is have, once the police department is fully staffed and, and patrol resources are, are more robust than they, they've been in years, it, it enables a further discussion around a topic like that. So whether it's a, a new position or a, a person drawn within the ranks, if that, if that moves forward at all, we're not here tonight to talk about the, the merits of, of, of that program. The point is, having the police department have more staff or patrol and be fully staffed, we need both things to be true, enables us to have a, a greater discussion around that topic. So it's significant tonight because all those positions are continuing in the budget and we're working on getting those filled. And the goal is to have the police department fully staffed and patrol resources on the street. So I, I think that, that's about all I'd want to say on that tonight. So.
So I, again, unsure of what we're allowed to talk about, not allowed to talk about. I, I don't want to brown act. So Jeff, you, no, I'm just, I'm, now I'm going to look at the lawyer. Appreciate you, Erin. But I'm going to look at the lawyer on that one. So you, you feel free to jump on the mic when, when I say something I'm not supposed to. So when it comes to our strategic plan and the conversation that we had specifically, chief with you, around our police positions, I will reflect back to the questions I asked you then, as well as reflect on what I continue to hear from my constituents in District 3, which is not enough patrol, have stopped calling the police because we don't feel like they respond. And part of why I worked so hard on measure O was because it was not fair to our police because as, as we've heard for the past several years, you haven't had the ability to be staffed up fully for various reasons, right? Budget being a large part of that, not having enough positions. And so for me, the thing that I'm probably most excited about, and I will speak for District 3, is to be able to have a fully staffed-up police department, to be able to respond to many of, again, as we were walking, including Sopizio Hall in your district as well, hearing from Southport residents, that they just didn't feel like they could possibly compete with some of the things that were happening in Districts 2 and District 1 in regards to the severity of the, the issues. One of the questions that I asked you during that strategic planning meeting was, hey, is this going to be enough? Are these positions going to be enough to be able to respond to, again, what I continue to hear from literally my neighbors, right? Which is on Marshall, there's just not enough patrolling, right? On Southport Parkway, there's just not enough patrolling. And your response was- And your response was, let's see, right? Like this is going to be a significant increase, but we're unsure of what that looks like. We haven't been fully staffed in, I think, as long as you've been there, right? And, and so I hesitate to say, hey, let's pull out potentially, or start talking about pulling away from the goal of what, as I was walking on Measure O, what we promised to you all and what we promised to our residents, which was fully staffed up police department that was going to be able to respond and patrol. And again, I would love to see what that looks like because to, again, reflect back on the responses that I got from you during that strategic planning meeting, we're unsure of if this is going to be enough. Those are my comments on that. Jeff, you didn't jump in, so I stayed on, I stayed on topic. There you go.
I'd, I'd like to add a little more about that. I think the chief has done a good job in speaking to the City Gate report, which is what we hadn't seen prior to that conversation. So, you know, reflecting on my comments, reading the report, I have a, a different perspective since that time in reading the report and learning that I think our chief really focused on the gaps that City Gate had identified and has been doing probably a robust process in building in those gaps, not just with, with bodies, but with technology. And just, I think, the number of things that I spoke at on the, on the State of the City speech, that I think people had learned about what has happened, the difference of things that have happened, just even seeing it live, implement, in the implementation today, in seeing that, you know, those that had committed a homicide and repeatedly tried to commit another homicide were captured immediately. And that's thanks to the work that the police department and the chief has done to implement quickly once, you know, the, the financing. I think the chief, visionary as he is, he will, you will, you know, foresee where the funding is and prepare to spend it quickly. So once that, once we have, you know, the financing to be able to fund it, that, that's what I've observed. And immediately you have like, okay, let's get this approved and out the door and let's get it purchased. And that, that, that's been my observation of what you've done, Chief. So with that, I will say, in the City Gate report alongside with the other recommendations is the SRO recommendation in there, which is why I think this conversation with Washington Unified, where I have said, look, we are prioritizing filling, you know, the gaps in the street. That is a priority in the City Gate, making sure we have X number of police officers covering the different shifts, looking at the geography. We are going to be growing, but, you know, for, but also from, you know, these officers in the future, you know, as we continue to grow and fill those gaps, this is going to be an area where I think we can tap someone who is going to be working alongside you in the future. And there is no time referenced, there is no time referenced on the, on that. But it is, it is being pointed out. I mean, I'm pointing it out because I think that's important to reflect that there's probably not going to be a separate budget item for that and this is going to be within this budget. And that's why I'm pointing that out.
I, I don't want to be, I don't want to misunderstand something. So are we talking about it here? Because I have, I don't have a problem-
No, I think the point is, that's a future decision. That's a future decision. Really no, no determination yet on whether it'll be a new position or not. We, we, the point is, the council's, I think-
Yes, please tell me the point.
What I'm hearing from the council is essentially two different ways of, of the same message. The goal of the council for Measure O was to increase patrol. And we've been focused on that. We've been, you approved the positions, we've been focusing on filling them. And until we do that, yes, we are working with the district on something that will take the form of a MOU that will be considered by both boards. Until all those things happen, we don't know today whether it would be, if, if that, if that actually does get implemented, whether it would be a new position or not. That'll be something we'll, we'll assess at the department level and with, with the budget and we'll make that recommendation to the council when that time comes, along with the discussion of that overall program. So that's something the council has not addressed yet.
Have an ETA on that? I mean, like, can I, can I ask that? I'm, I'm unsure of what I'm allowed to ask because we're bringing it up, but we're not talking about it.
It would be within the next fiscal year. It would be later in the fiscal year.
Okay.
Of, of '25, '26.
Okay. So at some point in time, we will see an MOU, potentially it will be reflected in this budget and that's why it's being brought up right now.
It's not reflected in this budget right now, no.
Okay. I have no preference. I am not yay or nay-ing this. I just would like to understand the point, what we're talking about here.
Yeah, we are not recommending it being reflected in the budget. We are, we are proposing the budget right now to include the positions that are allocated to patrol. The 13 new sworn positions are continuing in this budget. And once the time comes where that MOU is ready for council consideration, it'll mainly be about that topic specifically. If the council directs us to, yes, we want to move forward with this, we would also have a companion recommendation on whether it's a new position or it's one that is pulled from within the ranks. That's, those are both future council decisions. It's not under consideration tonight. I think the mayor was just making the point that the discussion is happening and people who are looking at it and wondering, hey, when is this going to come up? Why isn't the council adding a new position? That's why.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure they're following at home.
I know this is such a huge distraction from your whole presentation.
This is your meeting.
Thank you for the, the presentation. And I gather we need to-
Ooh, can I have a couple of questions? I mean, I appreciate.
Let me open it up for public comment really quick. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak? I don't want to forget.
There are no requests to speak on this item.
Closing public comment, bringing it back line.
Yeah, okay. So just to, to bring it just back to some of the, your, your presentation, so on there you showed four positions. And again, I just want to reflect back what I heard from our city manager, which is, yes, it's four, but technically we have positions that are actually starting more than just the four starting July 1st. In total, can you just remind me of that number? Because again, it wasn't in the slide. Apologies.
Pulling my gray matter. I want to say it was third, it was either 39 that started last fiscal year and additional 18 that started July 1st, or 39 in total and 18 of those start July 1st. I know 39 and 18. 18, there were 18 positions approved on March 19th that are effective July 1st that we are recruiting for.
Okay.
That's, I know 100%.
I appreciate you.
I got, I got the number right here. I got you if you, if you wanted. So, so you approved 21 in March. There are 18 that are start, well, actually you approved them all in March. 21 started right away, 18 kick on with this fiscal year. So 39 total.
Okay, 39 total.
This is Measure O.
Yep, nope, I fill you. 39 plus the four, we just are here.
Right.
The four tonight are, are, yes, plus, they add to the 39.
Perfect. So I'm going to, I'm going to lump all those together because I, when I saw the four, I was like, huh, I'm confused. But it makes sense now going back to what we approved. Where are most of the new positions actually being added?
The, of the four?
Of the total? I, I have it right in front of me if you want.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was like 10 parks, 12, 14, 15 PD. Go for it.
Yeah, so there are 19 in public safety, but that seems low, actually. There's, that's, that's including, so five, so that, that number is actually higher because fire is being funded out of the SAFER grant.
Okay.
So it's not included within that.
Those were added previously.
So 19 out of Measure O and public safety for now, 10 in public operations and maintenance, and additional 10 in parks and recreation, maintenance, parks maintenance.
Okay.
And of those 19, I think two were fire and the rest are PD.
Okay. So the, the bulk is being, the bulk of our positions are public safety and the bulk of the positions are public safety funded through Measure O.
And, and just as a reminder, the, the SAFER positions will eventually default to-
Roll over.
-Measure O. So it'll, it'll be many-
Nine additional, yeah. It was 48 with those.
And then those are not only coming from the general fund, but it sounds like coming from various measures that really, and again, I'm going to ask you sort of like a wonky budget question, those measures feed into the general fund or do you look at the general fund and the measures differently?
So for the, the four that we're talking about tonight, three of them are general fund positions. They're in the capital projects department. They implement projects, manage projects, engineering. And so they charge their time directly to those projects and the, the reimbursement comes from those projects. It's a variety of sources. It's grant sources, other external sources, internal funding sources that fund those projects, whatever they may be. And then there's the assistant city manager position, which is in our general support services fund. That fund includes things like city managers, city council, IT, finance, HR, fleet and facility maintenance, things that are citywide. And so all of those costs get allocated based on our cost allocation methodology, which takes things like building square footage, number of vehicles, number of accounts payable checks, those types of things to allocate those costs. And then one of them is not a new position, it's an upgraded position in the flood support services division. And all of those costs are ultimately funded by WISAFKA.
Okay. Last question that I have is just our reserves. I think we got a great question from Mayor Protem as well about just where those measures, the dollars that are going to be in those measures. But what is our overall reserves? And are we, now I'm trying to channel Councilmember Orozco because she asks about these reserves all the time, right? What are those reserves looking like and are we maintaining sort of our commitment to that percentage?
Yes, so that's your general reserve here. $14,22,547 is expected at the end of fiscal year '25, '26. And that actually increases, it's an 18% of our general fund revenues. If you recall, the council policy says that we need to maintain between 15 and 20% of general fund revenues. We've been around 17. It, it is projected to increase to 18%.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Right. With that, I'll accept a motion. Thank you so much, Roberta.
Early moves.
I'll second. All right. Madam Clerk, Councilmember early move, Mayor Protem, Solpezio Hall seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Akala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Solpezio Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. This item is approved. Next is item 21, under community development, public hearing regarding an appeal to the proposed tentative parcel map number 5247 at 3071 Davis Road. And who will be presenting on this? Andrea.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Andrea Ous, the Director of Community Development. I'm here tonight to request a continuance of the appeal-
Oh, continuance? Okay.
-of proposed tentative parcel map number 5247 at 3071 Davis Road. This continuance is requested by the applicant to a date uncertain in order for the applicant and staff to work out particular details that were subject of the appeal. And that concludes my report.
Do we need a vote on that?
We do.
Yep. Oh, all right, we'll vote on it. We'll accept the motion.
We'll make a motion. Second. Madam Clerk, Mayor Protem, Solpezio Hall moved and Councilmember Akala seconded.
Councilmember Akala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
You stepped away.
Sorry. Mayor Protem, Solpezio Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. All right, thank you so much. Next is item 22, under economic development and housing, is consideration of resolution 25-67, adopting the 2025-26 annual action plan for the community development block grant program. Who's presenting on that? I did see Mr. Alfred here earlier, but-
Yeah. They-
We can, we can go to the next item until he comes back.
If not, I can present it, so, okay. Up to you, Mayor.
You're going to present it?
No, Isaiah's here.
There he is.
Yeah, he's right here. There he is. If you want to go to the next item, just give him a, a breather, we can-
Isaiah, do you want to go or do you want to wait? Go ahead.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Guerrero, members of the council. My name is Isaiah Alfred. I'm the community investment planner in the economic development and housing department. The purpose of this presentation is to provide information on proposed activities for the 2025 community development block grant funding. Staff request the council to open a public hearing to take any comments. And upon closing the public hearing, staff respectfully requests the council to vote to approve resolution 25-67, adopting the 2025 annual action plan. On May 14th, HUD announced the CDBG allocations for the 2025 program year. The city will receive an allocation amount of $546,333 and staff anticipates receiving $15,000 in program income. Lastly, a carryover amount of $277,438 will be used from prior year resources. These funds were not drawn down yet because we have to spend any available program income first. As the council may recall, staff held a workshop on May 21st, 2025 to discuss the proposed CDBG activities. Staff's following recommendations have not changed from the workshop. Staff recommends the following activities for the 2025 program year. The homeless emergency housing rehabilitation project, up to $550,452.41. It's proposed to be used for ongoing improvements that are needed at existing homeless shelter sites. The city just recently closed escrow on the former Westwood Motel and will require rehabilitation work. We may also have additional rehabilitation needs at other emergency housing sites. The next activity is the homeless supportive services, up to $123,565. It's proposed to be used for continued funding for case management services, which is critical for homeless emergency housing program because we connect participants with permanent housing and supportive services. And the last activity is general administration and planning, up to $164,754. It's proposed to be used for the preparation of key HUD documents such as the annual action plan, the five-year consolidated plan, and the performance evaluation report. A 30-day, a 30-day public comment period was initiated from February 14th, 2025 through March 15th, 2025, and no formal comments were received during this public, public comment period. Additional comments were received, have been considered by staff. So in conclusion, staff request that the council open a public hearing to take any comments. And upon closing the public hearing, staff respectfully requests the council to vote to approve resolution 25-67, adopting the 2025 annual action plan. I'm open for question and comment.
Thank you, Mr. Alfred. Let me open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Closing and bringing it back to council. Any comments, questions? Go ahead.
I just have one quick question. Homeless population that we serve, what percentage is single and how many are active families?
That's a great question. I'm going to refer to Raul on that one. I don't have that data with me right now.
Someone, someone asked me some reason I'm asking.
I think just the general answer is probably, you can, you can do that.
So in, if we're talking about our homeless program, we try not to serve families. So all of the individuals that are served are actually individual people. We may have, say, a roommate situation where we place two individuals into one unit, but we try not to place households and, and that, that was done by design. Just because we try not to put families in, in, in that environment or homeless shelter.
Can you give a little bit of background on the, the county resources available for families that are experiencing homelessness?
Correct, yeah. So our homeless coordinator, Mark Sawyer, he does have other resources. So when there are families that come to him in need or we get calls from families that need immediate assistance or emergency shelter, we do refer them to Mark Sawyer. And he has other resources that he can tap into to help them with some immediate shelter needs or other referrals for other services that are adequate.
Okay, thank you. I follow you.
Yes.
Okay, early moves?
I'll second.
Right. Councilmember early move, Mayor Protem, Solpezio Hall seconded. Councilmember Early moved, Mayor Protem, Sulpicio Hall seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Akala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Sulpicio Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is item twenty-three under finance. Is a public hearing and consideration of resolution twenty-five dash fifty-nine confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering improvements for the storm drain maintenance district number one.
He walked out and I don't want to embarrass him, but are you all aware that Elijah's an author and he's got all of his.
I follow him on LinkedIn. I sure am.
Did you go to his book signing? It's pretty cool. So.
What? Girl, I didn't know that.
He had a book signing at Barnes and Noble recently. He's an author of children's books, Isaiah, sorry, or I, yes, Isaiah. I think I, I said the wrong name earlier, but just released another one or two children's books and did a book signing.
I'll share it with you. I'll share it on LinkedIn. Oh, I love it too. Thank you for sharing that.
Anyway. All right, so back with you again, Roberta Raper, Finance Director. This is a routine annual public hearing for the storm drain maintenance district. Had I known we'd be done so early, I would have made Mark stay to do this. But this district was formed prior to the adoption of Prop two eighteen, which has a lengthy requirement for updating fees. We're not proposing an increase to the assessment, but the county requires an adopted resolution to place the existing assessment on the tax rule. So tonight, we're asking council to hold a public hearing and adopt resolution twenty-five dash fifty-nine confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering the assessments to be placed on the tax rule for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for the storm drain maintenance district.
Thank you, Roberta. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
All right, bringing it back to council for comment, questions, or motion?
Early moves.
I'll second. Councilmember Early moved and Councilmember Sulpicio Hall seconded.
Councilmember Akala.
You stepped away.
Oh, gosh darn it. Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Sulpicio Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. You can ask Councilmember Akala again. He just was walking back. This is item twenty-three under finance. Is a public hearing and consideration of resolution twenty-five dash fifty-nine confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering improvements for the storm drain maintenance district number one. It's been passed and seconded. Councilmember Akala, and you're going to be called on for a vote.
Councilmember Akala.
Aye.
Passed four to zero.
All right, thank you so much, Madam. Thank you. Are you going to stay up for the next one? Item twenty-four under finance is a public hearing and consideration of resolution twenty-five dash fifty-eight confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering improvements to be made for the landscaping and lighting district number one.
Ditto. It's exactly the same. We're not proposing any increases. This was done prior to Prop two eighteen and the county requires a resolution.
Right. Thank you. Oh, go ahead. Oh, Madam, Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
All right, well, any comments or questions?
Early moves.
All right. I'll second. Okay, Councilmember Early moved and Mayor Protem, Sulpicio Hall seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Akala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Sulpicio Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Item is approved. All right, thank you. Okay, last but not least. Item twenty-five under the city manager's office is consideration of amended and restated employment agreement for city manager Erin Laurel, Ms. Amanda Berlin.
Good evening. Per the municipal code, the city manager is a position appointed by the council and subject to an employment agreement, which is renegotiated from time to time. The amended and restated employment agreement before you tonight includes changes to the existing city manager agreement culminating from the performance evaluation of, evaluation of Mr. Laurel completed by the council in closed session in early June. Due to this item containing compensation changes for a local agent, agency executive, the Brown Act requires an oral report summarizing the recommended changes prior to the council taking final action on the item. For this agreement, the recommended salary and benefit changes include a three-point-five percent salary increase for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, effective payroll period inclusive of June eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, which results in a base salary of two ninety-four, eight-two-eight, and a three-point-five percent salary increase for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, effective the payroll period inclusive of July one, two thousand twenty-five, which results in a base salary of three oh-five, one-four-eight. The recommended action is to approve the amended and restated city manager employment agreement dated July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. That concludes my presentation. Take any questions?
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on this?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Closing the public comment, bringing it back to council. No comments or questions? All right. I will just add on, on this a little bit. And the employment. So I, I would like to say that I would like to see an annual done. This is like over two years and annually, this gives us an opportunity to compensate, you know, at, at the rate that, you know, annually should be done as all employees receive an annual. And so with that, there's a compounded amount here to cover for last year. And so the city manager has had quite a workload in the last two years. One for the surprise A's arrival and making sure that our city is safe. And then the passage of Measure O and the implementation of the expenditure and the implementation plan of that. And also the EIFD and consideration of where we're going with getting that spent. Priority number one being I Street Bridge. You know, our, our traffic mitigation, you know, is, is pretty huge and also for our flood protection, accomplishing all those things and getting fire department ramped up with Engine forty-five, launched and eleven firefighters coming into us, new firefighters coming into West Sacramento and over like twenty-five West Sac PD staff hired and brought on board. A robust surveillance, you know, system where we're able to, you know, get higher ways of public safety throughout the entire city. And you heard it from our firefighter association that Erin is very receptive and takes the time to learn among our employees what's important and likes to hear from them directly. So, you know, with that, I'm supportive of this. Motion?
I'll move.
Early seconds. All right. Madam Clerk. Councilmember, Mayor Protem, Sulpicio Hall moved and Councilmember Early seconded.
Councilmember Akala.
Before I cast my vote, I want to clarify that it's not reflected on the reinstatement but on the salary judge's adjustment. So I'm voting no on this.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Sulpicio Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
Item is approved. And next is general administration function part two. Do we have any council updates from our assignments? Anybody?
I'll just, I'm sure you'll, you'll want to talk probably a little bit about this too. So we had the fire academy graduation that we attended last week. That was just really amazing to, as we've heard the whole night, just a lot of the hard work over the past couple of years that have gone into making sure that our public safety departments are able to truly reflect the needs of our community. And so was very excited about that. I also had a chance to go to our police academy graduation as well, which was in Ranch Quodova. And again, it was just very, very exciting to see chief there with our new recruits. And so just a lot of activity and a lot of good things coming to West Sacramento. And so just very proud of this council and all the hard work that, that we've done. And it felt like a culmination, being able to attend those graduations.
Yes.
Real quick, I attended the Illusolano Air Quality Management District meeting and we passed our budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. I also, whoops, I turned this off. Sorry about that. I attended the Indigenous Fest this last weekend and it was a wonderful event. It was there on the Riverwalk. And it was presented by Three Sisters Gardens and Alfred Malborne. Native American culture was presented through music, dance, crafts, food. And they had a lot of resource booths. It was a really great event. This is their fourth annual. And I really encourage folks to attend. It gets bigger and bigger each year. Good event. Anybody else? So I don't have my notes with me, but I do want to say two by two met earlier this week. Oh, please, it just flew. It's been a busy week. And the two by two did have several discussions. We discussed Bright Park and the progress of the seven-eleven committee and they're, they're going to continue to meet and make a decision. I think they have three more meetings before that decision is made for the sale of Bright Park to the city using our grant. Thank you, Kate, where you are. And the, the other item on the agenda was the SRO discussion. And the key component of the SRO was, you know, looking, you know, finalizing between, it's going to be the administration. Our administration and their superintendent, the MOU to establish an agreement. The MOU is, that has been drafted by the school district reflects the feedback from the community. So that feedback is complete. And there are a number of items that they are hoping to ensure that the SRO personnel is going to accomplish. And we have our asks, which is, you know, in discussion, we shared some ideas of where we're at. Hoping to get that MOU. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to have a police officer or anybody out there running in there, you know, in the next six months, three months or two months. It's, it's a process. And we want to make sure that this process, this is not an SRO. We want to hire just for a year, six months. We want somebody who's going to be there prepared, trained, you know, and able to be there for a period of time to cultivate and build a relationship. We're not rushing into this. We know parents are wanting somebody there. Been hearing from them tomorrow. But this is a delicate process to reinstate somebody, especially hearing the feedback that I've received from both sides on this. And we, we are sensitive to that. And I just want to make sure that this process is being nurtured in a way that is supportive of all different points of view. Did I miss anything, Councilmember, Mayor Protem, on that meeting? Was there anything else that I think?
No, I think that was, those were the two big activities that are on Bright Park.
Okay, good. And, sorry, I missed the police academy graduate. I hope to have an opportunity. I did, I go, I went to the all-girl state briefing and that was really fun to do, but I was, that was where I was. And, and tomorrow, next one, I'll be in Tampa Bay. U.S. Conference of Mayors is meeting this next four days. And I'm looking forward to, you know, carrying the international committee vice chair, the Children's Health and Human Services Committee, so. It just, this chairing for the international is just, I'm a member and there's a lot of people out. It's been a busy time for mayors. A lot of crises is going on in their jurisdictions. So as, as you can imagine, a lot of mayors are struggling. We somehow are doing well and hope to keep that, continue to pray for our safety, that it is, that it is safe. And we're going to continue, we're going to, we're going to learn from other mayors about how to face those challenges of civic discourse in a way that is supportive. So in conversations with Mayor Bass and, and other mayors that are experiencing this locally, we, we're going to have a special session to learn some, and I want to be able to include our chief and have a chief's briefing once that happens. And then this last, this last Saturday, we had play ball weekend. And we had hundreds of kids attend and participate in U.S. Conference of Mayors as a partner and with the Major League and Minor League baseball team. And it, we had a blast. We had a lot of kids. West Sac Little League, twelve U helped out pitching in and, and they're going to be taken to a suite. And there was a big team there, so they're going to watch an A's game from the suite. Looking forward to that. And that's, I think that's all I have to report for now. Council Calendar?
No report tonight.
City manager report?
Just a note, I, I think I've reminded some of you after tonight, I'll be out for a family wedding and then a few days off after Sobi gone, the rest of this week and all of next week. So I believe I've already taken meetings off the counter. Amanda will, I think, be here. Yes, Amanda will be here and will be acting city manager and then will be here, point of contact, anything. Thank you.
City attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Staff direction from city council members, non-future agenda items. I don't see any with that. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll move. Early seconds.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Akala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Sulpicio Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. We are now adjourned. Thank you.